Yes, sir.
For the authority invested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Roll call, Mr. Manfredi.
Ms. Patina, present.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Stokely?
Here.
Ms. Leonard?
Here.
Ms. Sokolowski?
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mayor Frost?
Here.
All present.
Career Council?
O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people that we represent. Amen.
President, ensure the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any announcements, so we'll get to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griffin. We have no presentations. The consent agenda, before you for approval, is to approve and adopt the February 3, 2016, and February 2017, 2016 council meeting minutes, to accept the February ending treasurers report, the 2015 Planning Commission annual report, and to authorize the borough manager to bind property liability and workers' compensation insurance for the April 1 renewal, and also to consider the Leland Mansion for future use at a future date. That is your consent agenda, sir. If there's a motion.
I'll make that motion.
So I'd like to talk about taking the Leland Mansion future use off of the agenda?
If you leave it on, you are removing it. You mean for discussion this evening or for a future date?
For a future date.
If you approve this, the way it's written, you will be taking it off. It won't be considered until sometime in the future.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so then I will make that motion. Shall I second it?
Okay. We have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The unfinished business, as we discussed, the Environmental Advisory Council has one vacancy. You conducted interviews, and there is also a requirement in the ordinance for the council to actually appoint a chair. At the last meeting, the Advisory Council recommended Matthew Breidenstein as the chair. So if you're so inclined, you can take either by one motion or by two motions to decide if you want to appoint someone to the Environmental Advisory Council that submitted their names. I would suggest you make it two separate motions, or if you want to combine them, either way, it's up to you. First question is, do you want to appoint Matthew Breidenstein as chair of the EAC as recommended by the EAC?
Yes.
If so, just make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion for it.
I'll motion it.
Second? We have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And then the next question would be, did you want to fill the vacancy, or did you want to wait until you considered the planning commission vacancies as well? It's up to you. If you want to do one tonight, you can fill it tonight to a three-year term.
Yeah.
Yes. We just require a motion to whoever it is you'd like to to fill the term for that seat.
I'd like to make a motion for Rosemary Northcutt to fill that seat.
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion and second? One is for the vacancy?
On the EAC, yes.
Okay. All move, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And then the last item, as you know from many discussions, with respect to the comfort station that was scheduled to be put at the trail, this evening, there's two pieces. One, Mr. Savona will have to discuss, but in particular, consider accepting a fee in lieu of the comfort station at Equus, an amount determined by the borough manager with consideration of her professional's recommendations. And since that time, and I've provided it to you, the applicant has given us his actual costs that he had built into his budget based on what it was going to cost them for the comfort station. That number is in $102,000 and change, and he's here this evening for you to question or ask any questions of. Once you do that, then I would think Mr. Savona would advise if there's any procedural motion necessary to amend the plan, or if you think it's not necessary. That's really the only, the two issues before you this evening. So, Ms. Bob, do you want to come on?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening. What Rich indicated was accurate. I had submitted a letter to Borough through Rich indicating that our budget was $101,000, $102,000, and we would be happy to donate that to the borough for any purposes necessary for improving the trails or improving the town, or the borough's recreational needs in lieu of installing the comfort station.
Are you limited to recreational needs, or?
No.
Whatever the needs of the council?
Whatever council would prefer. It's fine with us. That's all I've had to say, hopefully.
Do we need a motion accept this? Mike?
Yeah, just pulling up the...
While he's pulling that up, just for everyone's edification and to be clear, very specifically, what the number is, $101,286, which is shown as the Elm Street Comfort Station costs, and Mr. Dwyer, what you're saying is that is the number that you have, that you were going to use to build this station?
Right.
So you're actually offering a dollar for dollar?
Yes.
What it was going to cost you for this station?
Absolutely, correct.
Bob, you remember which condition the comfort station is?
I have it back here.
And just as a refresher, when it went through the approval process, council also asked of this particular applicant for $500,000 for road improvements and also for money for escrow for road. Correct.
So the council approved, granted approval for the project at 400 West Elm Street by adoption of Resolution Number 2015-12, Condition Four of the approval resolution, which is...
I can read it for you, have it here, if necessary.
Sure. What's the number?
It's number four. Applicant shall obtain approval of Borough Council for a proposed public amenity comfort station in order to exceed the building limits of 85 feet in the SP 3 district as proposed by the plan.
So the appropriate motion at this point for purposes of the minutes would be a motion to waive the requirements of Condition Four of Resolution 2015-12, subject to the applicant's payment of an impact fee or a fee in lieu of an amount of $102,000 to the Borough General Fund to be designated for use on amenity to be determined in your first word.
And we need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further business.
No further business?
No, sir.
Then we'll have a little public comment. Eddie, we got a public comment? Could you go to the mic, Roden, please? No, 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 bring it back. You're next.
Yes, I'm George Gethard from 131 West 12th Avenue. My reason, for me to be here tonight, is a reason of concern of the stop sign at the intersection of 12th and Maple Street. Now, I know that, you know, there's problems with stop signs and rolling stops in every stop sign in Conshohocken. We have thousands of them. I'm totally aware of that. My concern, however, is that I have four grandchildren who live on the corner of 12th and Maple Street, ranging in age from one to 12. There's also a little girl, two years old, two doors up, girl across the driveway, and across the street, there's sometimes grandchildren there. Now, the problem with this stop sign is that you have your typical rolling stops for people going 12th, down 12th Avenue, people going to Cardinal View and whatever, and, but my main concern is, it's also the intersection where across the intersection is one of the entrances to Plymouth Gardens Apartments. Now, on a number of occasions, more than I would like to, you know, it's more than once or twice, and I live at 131, which is a couple hundred feet up the, from the intersection, so I'm not always there, but on a number of occasions, people going down into Plymouth Gardens have gone through the stop sign without even hitting their brakes. Now, with the down, the decline in the, in Maple Street going down to, somebody walking out, even a man of my stature, I know I'm huge, but if I walk out from behind the cars at that intersection, nobody can see me walking out behind the cars. If one of my grandchildren walks out, they're gone. I don't know what can be done about the situation other than, you know, I know, like I said, every stop sign in town has a problem. I know the police department can't be there, you know, at every stop sign and all that, but the people, the people going down into Plymouth Gardens Apartments present a real danger to the children and especially to my grandchildren. So I don't know if anything can be done about it. I don't know if there's, the one thing I think would be the best thing, I don't know that it can be done legally, you know, on a municipal street, but boy, I'll tell you what, a speed bump would be, would be the answer to the, to the problem, because that would make the people stop going down into the Plymouth Garden Apartments. Now, I don't know if it can be done on a municipal street or not, but that, to me, would be the solution, other than the police, you know, having the police sit, you know, they are more than welcome to sit in my driveway and watch the cars going through there and, you know, and stuff like that. Now, also, I don't know if the borough manager or the chief of police could contact the apartment complex itself, because I know for a fact that the apartment complex itself has speed bumps throughout the complex. So perhaps if they would install a speed bump at the top of the hill coming out of the complex, then the cars going down into the complex would have to slow down. Now, that's perhaps another option, and that is a private street. That, once it gets into the complex across this 12th Avenue, it's not a municipal street, it's a private street, but I certainly hope something can be done about it. It's a very, very dangerous situation. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You can ask Mike about, on our streets, could we put a speed bump on our own street? Lickly?
It requires some, if it's, I mean, you can put speed bumps up, it's not just, you can go out and drop in a speed bump. There's certain engineering studies that have to be done. It's all set out in the Pemba manual, I believe, as far as the criteria that have to be met in order to justify it. And that's, that's something that we'd have to take a look at, just something councils to consider.
Okay, and then I, I'll talk to Mike, maybe he'll send a let's go up there a couple of times, then a cop up there to sit there a couple of times. If you catch a couple of people a couple of times, it might get the message.
Thank you for your consideration.
George, I have a question. Do you know how many people live, or how many residents are in that complex?
Oh, in the complex? That's, that's a, that's quite a large complex.
Right, that's what I was thinking, that that's a significant amount of cars.
Yes, I mean, there's, there's a number of cars that also, that part, that one block of Maple Street, by the way, is one-way, for whatever reason, the rest of Maple Street isn't. I really don't know the reason for it. And there are a number of cars that come up the one-way street from the complex, because, you know, I guess, they just don't give a damn, honestly. And, but there again, that's not dangerous. They come up the street, when they're coming up the street, they can see the kids coming out. The danger is the people going down the hill, if you walk out in front, you know, if one of those kids walks out in front of one of those cars, I mean, I've actually done it myself, and truthfully, I've done it on purpose. I have stood behind a car, I can tell by the car engine that the car's speeding down, and I'll take a couple steps out and make them stop. And, you know, sometimes they react as if I'm doing something wrong, but...
Other than the intersection that you're referring to, is there another area to go in and out of there, or is that the only one?
Well, that's one of the problems with that complex, is there are two, two ways to get in and out of the complex. Unfortunately, the other way is Fayette Street, where there is no traffic signal, and if they're coming out onto Fayette Street and have to take a left-hand turn, it's a lot easier for them to come up Maple Street and up 11th Avenue, or whatever, or all the way up Maple Street.
So that's right by that Antioch Church.
Yes, and also, there again...
Right before.
One thing I think might help with the complex, and this is another thing where, you know, the borough manager or the police chief would have to get in touch with the complex, is going down Wood Street into the Cardinal View Development. I know there's one area there behind the swimming pool of the complex where there's only about 10 or 15 feet of grass, they could open up another exit out of that complex, and it would help tremendously.
But that's not in Conshohocken.
Well, the problem is, the complex, you know, of course, is in Plymouth Township.
Right.
All right? And the minute they come out of the complex, they're coming into Conshohocken.
Yeah, I know where to bring on.
And, you know, like I said, unfortunately, you know, these are the people that I have the problem with, are people who live in Plymouth Township, live in that, in that...
I can reach out to the township manager as well as the general manager of the complex.
And I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Mike.
I'll tell you, like I said, if they would, if the complex who already has speed bumps throughout the complex, if they'd be willing to put one at the top of that hill, I think it would solve a lot of the problems. People would have to slow down, or else they'd be going into the swimming pool.
I could certainly ask.
All right, I appreciate that very much. Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thanks, George.
Any more public comment? Come on now.
I just asked the bird to make sure he gets contact info.
Okay. No more public comment? On a nice night like the night, nobody want to have a comment? You want to talk about your Afield, how are you coming along with that? Give me, give me an update on that.
We're coming along fine with the Afield plaques. We started fundraising last week, we're at 50% of our goal. I was just discussing the possibility of aesthetically what the plaque would look like with Mr. Frost. I've attempted to reach out to the class of 65 or 66 of Conshohocken, the class that Chris Bocroth played, he played sports for, and I thought it would be a good idea to invite them as part of the, the event, because they would be friends and comrades with Mr. Bocroth. And I've spoken with a couple of Conshohocken alumni, and we're still working on that. But I think our intention is to go for Saturday afternoon in September. I know we have to cooperate with the Conshohocken Golden Bears. We might have to do it perhaps on the same day that they're playing games, but we don't plan to cause them trouble if they don't cause us trouble.
Or Steph, come on, you had to check it with her.
Yes, I, I... I, yeah, it's tough with the Golden Bears, because their schedule doesn't come out until August, and I can't start in August in order to do something in September. So, but we, you know, hopefully we'll all cooperate and get along and work it out, and, you know, if necessary, we'll make a contribution to the Golden Bears or something.
Mr. Griffin?
Incorporate them into the event.
Mr. Griffin, I think what he's saying is that because we don't always know when the games are going to be for the Conshohocken Bears...
Yeah, I know, they get up there on a Saturday and be up there all day. I know what he's talking about.
And their schedule doesn't come out until August, is my understanding, and it makes it very difficult to plan around them.
That's correct.
And as a former midget football player, I understand that, why they get priority, so... Well, we've simplified the event a lot, and so right now, we're mainly limiting it to Archbishop Kennedy football, former Archbishop Kennedy and St. Matthew High School football players. We'll have an unveiling of the plaques. The guys who played for Chris Bocroth and the guys who played for Charlie Heavy love to talk about them, so we'll probably have some speeches, and then we'll adjourn to a Conshohocken establishment for further conversation and maybe a little food and drink.
Sounds good.
If he's trying to reach out to other classmates, if council's okay with it, if you want to give us something, we could post it for him, you know, whether it be Facebook or other places.
We can put it on the web.
It's up to you guys.
Okay. Great.
Try to help him reach out.
Didn't know about that option. So, everything's going fine, so I think, I think, I think we'll have a great day, and we'll also have plans to get some news articles in Times Herald, probably the Plymouth, I don't know what the Plymouth paper's called. And I'm almost ready to say the Conshohocken Recorder, but I know that's not around anymore.
Times Herald.
Times Herald.
Times Herald.
Times Herald, yeah.
Yes, the Times Herald.
Carl, right there.
I'm not ready to talk to him yet, so don't... Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comment?
What is this update on the new borough website?
It's in final review.
Okay.
That's it.
Counsel? Counsel, anything?
I prefer not to give one, but I would say within the next two weeks, couple weeks, by the end of the month. It's doing final content, like to have council take a look at it before it goes live, and then it'll be out there.
Hey, Bob?
Yeah, we had the workshop we had on Saturday, I think it was very successful, and I think the next one we should maybe have down at the new boathouse, walk along the river, and have a meeting down there. I think it would be nice. And also, afraid with super. And thanks to Karen, Karen and Tina.
And thank to Harvey and the crew. They did a great job as usual, and I'm looking forward to next year. Anybody else there? You want to, you want to mention about the...
Harvey, for the record, I think we recognize that we were a little bit excessive with what we distributed in the first four, five blocks. Doesn't that happen every year when we are... So, every year, so we always run out. Having those little kids standing there looking at you. It was really hard. No, the thing was, there were so many children there.
It was wonderful.
And I know all the businesses had a, had a great Saturday, they all pat me on the back, I don't know what for. Steph, you want to say something about the Donna Frio?
Yes, we have 26 teams.
Come on, come on.
Busy playing solitaire in the back, no. The Donna Frio is set to go, we're very excited. We have 26 teams that are participating from the Mid-Atlantic County, and it starts on Monday, March 21st. The first game is at 7:00 PM, and it's four weeks long. The championship game will be on April 12th.
You might put that on the website too, I guess. It's there.
And thank you for the passes.
Yes, thank you.
Any more? Counsel, mayor?
Just one quick announcement, we've nailed down a date for the 15th Annual Conshohocken Car Show, so if you want to mark your calendars, it'll be June the 4th. That's the first Saturday in June, as it's always been, and further updates will be coming.
Okay, Jim, just, just one thing, good thing.
Go ahead.
You know, I used to do that bathroom in the park down at Suckup Park, and, you know, because I did, I like to walk in there once in a while, check it out. Whoever's doing it is doing an excellent job. I've never seen it so clean, and I wanted to say that a couple of times.
Thank, thank Steph back there.
But I'd like to just say something about Dennis, why he's up there. Dennis fulfilled that, the bath, taking care of the bathrooms when we were doing the transition, so I want to thank Dennis for what he done for us down there during the months that we needed somebody down there to keep an eye on that for us. Yeah, but they're getting paid and you weren't.
Thank you, Mr. Beaver.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I got one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm new to the area, moved in about September, and I got involved with the Conshohocken Art League over at the Mary Wood Park House. That's where we, we have our classes, and thanks to Rich Manfredi, we're still viable. We were hitting, we don't, it's a nonprofit organization, and we have lessons for kids on Saturday morning and for adults on Tuesday morning. And I'd just like to publicly thank the borough and Rich for a contribution to keep us afloat. We were in dire needs, and I'd also like to make an invitation to the borough and especially Rich.
Well, actually, I can't take credit for that, it was the Borough Council authorized it.
All right, whatever. But I want to thank everyone, because it's most appreciative of our organization, and we have a exhibit May 1st between 1 and 3 at the Mary Wood Park House on 5th, 5th Street, and I'd like to make an invitation to everyone on the Borough Council. Thank you.
Just a question for you, seeing as you're newly involved down there, would you think you would be able to pull together some kind of art contest, maybe famous landmarks of Conshohocken, and we could maybe display them here and have some kind of cash award for the best, best of show, something like that?
That's a great idea, yeah, sure.
Now, they all can't go do the mansion at 8th. Everybody's going to want to do the mansion at 8th. Got to come up with something a little more creative, but I just thought if we could get some artists involved and put some of that down on a, on a piece of canvas, it'd be nice.
Well, if you come over to the Mary Wood House, you'll see the, the beautiful, it's wall-sized landscape of Conshohocken, and maybe you could bring up some ideas then when you come over, May 1st, but I'll bring it up at the board, the next board meeting.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice, maybe we get 15 or 20 participants, and maybe they end up selling...
up selling a couple pieces to boot.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. What is your name, sir?
Al Raynor, R-A-Y-N-O-R, 324 13th Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Any more comments? Well, I got one, they're talking about the, I think Batrick's pay free, but I'm working on putting the Fun Fest back on Fayette Street, so we'll use to get ready for that, because we're getting it back on there where it belongs, on Fun Day. I think we'll have a better time on Fayette Street than down in the closed place, so if anybody got any comment on that, keep it in mind, you could come up and talk to me.
Mr. President, you may want to check with the children in the last row if they have any comments about the Fun Fest on Fayette Street.
Who's that?
The big child or the little child?
Big child and the little child.
Are there any other comments from the last row?
Come on, you can say something.
Any comments about the Fun Fest?
No.
Are you glad to see it come back?
We have one laid on.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any more comments? Okay, with that, me adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.